Good evening, I'm going to call the order of the business meeting for the Tacoma Public School Board Thursday, September 27th. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
(inaudible)
Before I call the roll, I was just notified that we lost suddenly one of our paras,
Val Olson, who was a community-based transition job coach, unfortunately passed away. So, would you all please bow your head for a moment and let's just share her in our thoughts. Thank you. General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
Director Hines.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
And our President and Vice Presidents Cobb and Viall, excused?
They are both excused.
Thank you.
Item number four, adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption tonight.
That's okay.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to the Northeast Tacoma Healthy Kids Initiative Coalition. My apologies.
Ms. Tambere is coming up representing the community-based.
Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. The Gold Star Community Partners Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids.
The mission of the Northeast Tacoma Healthy Youth Coalition is to serve Northeast Tacoma Public School students each week with meals. In our community, food is a top issue. One in four children in Pierce County do not get enough to eat each day. We know when basic needs are not met, this impacts the students, student achievement, their overall well-being, and in turn infects their future. So how did the coalition come to be? In 2011, a volunteer, Tanya Murphy, began providing meals at my school, Northeast Tacoma Elementary, to 25 students each week.
In 2016, Ms. O'Carice, a compassionate parent and community member, decided to mirror Ms. Murphy's program by providing 10 meals to students each week at Browns Point Elementary. Then at the end of the school year, Tony Stallman, a social worker of both Browns Point and Northeast Elementary, informed Ms. Carice that after five years, Ms. Murphy was retiring. So Ms. O'Carice and Ms. Stallman immediately pulled together Genyness Browns Point PTA President and Tina Anton and Pastor Katie Klosterman of the Nourish for Food Bank at Browns Point.
The group had so much success, they asked themselves a critical question. Could they in fact keep providing foods for the students at Northeast Tacoma as well as Browns Point Elementary and also meet the needs of the hungry students at Meeker Middle School and Crescent Heights Elementary? They asked the question and they decided yes, they could. They sent out a letter to families and predicted, one school predicted, they would have four students and they were astonished to learn they had over 50 students that indicated that they would benefit from food on the weekends. What they realized was that the food insecurity is a silent issue and providing enough meals was going to be a lot of coordination, but as of right now, they provide 500 bags every week to hungry students.
So these are a few of their activities. Across four schools, they perform outreach and secure partnerships with families, clubs, PTAs to scout students, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, and local businesses. School counselors identify the students as well as their siblings to ensure the program moves with students as they progress through the grades and up to Meeker. Partners are mobilized each week to donate or shop for nutritious meals, then package and deliver them to students, and names are kept confidential. The volunteers and the coalition members do not know who they serve. Nine people total coordinate resources and activities such as day-to-day operations and monthly meetings with representatives from all four schools. So how are things going? In 2017-18, the Northeast Tacoma Healthy Kids Coalition provided weekly meals to 125 families each week throughout the school year and during summer school. So the Community Partnership Office recommends to the Board of Directors to recognize the Northeast Tacoma Healthy Kids Coalition Award and award them the Gold Star Community Partnership Award. They're in the back.
Would you please come up so we can say thank you? Thank you, that's such a great example of the power of partnership that we have in Tacoma. Some of you may not know that we have over 200 partnerships in the community, so it's based on the premise of schools can't do it alone, and it's great to see people that take the initiative to help our kids and families. So, thank you again to the coalition. We'll move on to item number six, the Superintendent's Report. Six point one, the school year start from Human Resources.
Thank you very much, it's great to have Dr. Nolan in front of us, and she is always, her department is always really busy in the beginning of school, and thank you, Lisa, for coming up to give us a report about what's going on.
Yeah, you bet. Before I move forward with the formal part of the presentation, that's with the PowerPoint here, there's a few general things that I'd like to touch base on. Last week, during the board meeting, you may remember during public comment, that we heard from one of our paras, a story about another para whose hours were cut and she was not informed. Well, I want you to know that that was heard, and the district responded, and we responded quickly to reinstate her hours and ensure that she has the FTE that she had that is commensurate to what she had last year. So that's been done, that's been taken care of, and I am very, very thankful, I am sad that it got to that point, but please know that it's taken care of and her hours are reinstated. So, thank you. And Barb, I believe it was you who brought it up, so thank you to Barb. And on that same vein, I'd like to share with you that we are in negotiations with our paraeducators, a specific salary reopen or negotiation. And I could not be more proud and sincere when I say that the district has extreme value for our paraeducators, and we recognize the valuable role that you play. And as I look back here and I see the blue shirts, there's several of you who I know, and those of you who I don't know, I am just as confident that you make all the difference in the world for our students as those who I do know personally. We started our first bargaining session yesterday, and we had another one today, and the district has a strong interest in resolving this quickly in the name of supporting our paraeducators. And if I could say one strong message, I want to say that the board and the district heard your comments last week, and I know there's more of you here tonight, and we will listen again. We understand that even though this bargain is solely related to salary, we are hearing the deeper concerns that have been expressed by our paraeducator professionals, and we are here to listen. Our goal through this negotiation is to demonstrate respect and give you the information and the respect that you deserve, paras, during this time, and we will do our very best to respond appropriately. And with that being said, I do have one small celebration, Gina Coleman is in the room, front and center. I can't get into the details, but I am very happy to report that we have reached a TA with our nutrition services. It hasn't been ratified, so details to come. And now, for the moment we've been waiting for, the PowerPoint. Before I get into that though, I know there's HR team members who are here in the group. If you guys would just stand real quick and give a wave. There they are, this is Team Awesome. I am going to share some numbers and some information that in my opinion are nothing less than profound and speak to the robust nature and expertise that we have within Human Resources. And we get the sole existence of the work that we do is to support every student every day. I'm going to touch on staffing, professional development, going to provide a quick evaluation update, and of course, a little bit on the whole educator initiative and the academy, and generate throughout some evidence of some strong HR momentum. Here's some numbers that we're very proud of, and you can look at the numbers and see that we've been very busy. Due to some finalization of some recent negotiations, we've got some work to do around certificated salary changes, and what I've got to tell you is that those 2,895 have already happened so that we can meet an upcoming payroll. But one thing that I'd like to share with you, a number that does not exist on here, is the number 16. And the number 16 represents the number of teacher vacancies that we had on the first day of school. Why is that number important? Well, because we do our very best to ensure that every student has a highly qualified teacher in front of them on the first day of school. And yet, we have this responsibility to balance that with that fiscal responsibility. So the number 16 represents a responsible number that we have our teachers in front of our students, and yet, if we don't meet the enrollment that we were projected to meet, we still have the opportunity to do some internal movement to support every student every day. And another number that I would like to bring up that's not represented on here and will be a recommendation for the board to vote on this evening, is the number 22. And that number 22 represents the number of teachers who are considered to be out of field. Why is that important? Well, we partner within the regulations of the statute as well as the Professional Educator Standards Board to ensure that we meet all the necessary requirements for any teacher who is out of endorsement or out of field to teach in another area or another category. And I will tell you that that requires a partnership between Human Resources, the principal, and the teacher. It is not a measure that is taken lightly, it is looked over with a fine-tooth comb to ensure that we have highly qualified people in front of our students. And I just wanted to bring that up because again, the board will be voting on that action under the personnel recommendations this evening. Here's some more numbers that represent the HR momentum. For not every resignation, but nearly every resignation, there's a hire, same with the retires. So you just can see these numbers that took place over the summer to help us get up to speed and have a successful start to the school year. Professional development, we handle the technical expertise that's required for processing professional development. While Human Resources is not the responsible party for the content, rather, that comes from curriculum and instruction, we do coordinate all efforts for our classified staff and we process for the entire district. So what happened this summer is we've had 1,620 classes or workshops that were posted. We are very happy to say that we had 150 attendees at the substitute conference, and please know, Board, per your direction during one of our study sessions on safety last spring, you indicated your interest in ensuring that there was a focus on safety for our substitute training, and we had just that under the direction of Director Collette Stewart. We had a great day for our substitutes, and we got 150 of them there, and it was a fantastic conference. The Whole Educator Academy was phenomenal, I can't speak enough to that, I'm very thankful for the group who worked on that through CNI and our teacher practitioners, but what that meant for Human Resources is that we had 1,270 requests to process and almost as many clock hour forms to process. We had 216 participants at the OPPT Conference, and we held deep dives for our administrators, and we had 85 attendees there.
Can I ask a question about your first bullet? The 1,620 classes or workshops, is that how many people took those classes?
No, that's the number of classes or workshops that we offered, so...
In one summer?
Yeah, so you can see, well, that's what was posted, they may be coming up in the near future, but roughly each year, we have a few thousand courses that are offered, which means that we are a rich district providing professional development. When I say rich, I don't mean financially rich, I mean robustly rich in our ability to provide professional development, and there's a strong focus on that. Just wanted to be clear about that. Evaluation Toolkit, this is an important next step for our entire district in the sense that we will be launching live very, very soon, our robust access for our evaluators and our staff members who are curious to learn about the different requirements within the evaluations. And it's designed with everyone in mind, whether you're an evaluator or a practitioner, under each category, and you can see a sample there, if you're a nurse, you can click on nurses and find out some resources that could help you become a better practitioner in your field. If you're a counselor, same thing, and as an evaluator, there's resources that go beyond the evaluation, resources that can help you improve your craft in your particular line of field. We've got a calendar that shows the evaluators exactly what they need to do and when, and those resources to help staff improve performance are something that we're proud of because we believe in supporting the whole educator. And speaking of the whole educator, we launched the whole educator last year, we are moving into phase two of our whole educator campaign, and I am so happy to report to you that we are partnering with the community, we are able to offer certain discounts for health and fitness, we're partnering with the Eastside Community Center for discounted rates there, and even with local mortgage companies who offer a reduction in the points or the closing costs or a lowered interest rate for our staff members. So, we're going to do our very best to continue to draw people to our website so that they understand what is available for them. And another initiative under this is just get out and move and be healthy and be well and be balanced because we recognize that it takes 100% of our effort to do our very best on behalf of students each day. Little bit more about HR momentum, a celebration is we had all of our certificated staff placed prior to the first day of school, and you may know that sometimes there's moving parts right up until the very end, depending on vacancies and openings, and everyone was placed. We held a displaced paraprofessional and certificated guidance event to help and support those who were going through a shift in their employment and to help lower any anxiety that might exist around that. And of course, I already talked about the Whole Educator Academy through our partnership and the strong lifting from curriculum and instruction. We are very proud of the fact that last spring, we closed the year out by sending out our electronic contracts, and we've got a dashboard through our Power BI that could give us real-time data as to those contracts, when they were turned in, what was pending, what was not. It reduced our costs by 50%, those that we could quantitatively figure out anyway, but we know that that cost reduction was higher, it's just harder to calculate some of those other benefits. This meant that our employees knew right away if they submitted their contract, and it helped us for our staffing, our spring staffing to prepare for the fall because we were able to understand more quickly who was able to commit to Tacoma Public Schools for this school year. We have worked with our Business Finance Division to integrate systems management since our technology access and our portals integrate between HR, payroll significantly. We have combined a team who is dedicated to providing support for Human Resources and Business Finance, and we have already seen the evidence of how that lean approach makes a difference for the support of the organization. And what I am very proud of in Human Resources is our ability to access data and the dashboards that we're frequently able to refer to around demographic data, the professional development, and many different things, as you've seen our KPIs in the past that help us track data and help us understand around our time to hire and things like that. So we're very proud of the fact that we're using data to guide our decisions, which leads us right into strategic planning. We have developed our five-year plan that will be able, is nearly, it's in the final stages of publication, and we'll be able to share that with you soon, and what that did for us is help us to define our work delivery models, our service delivery models. We're focusing on the diverse candidates within our strategic planning and our succession planning, our whole educator support, and we're expanding our technology to learn how we can continue to better support our stakeholders because our belief is, when we support our educators, we are supporting the students in Tacoma Public Schools. And in Human Resources, we work very hard to connect the right person to the right job, and our team, I believe, did it. We got down to those 16 openings for the first day of school, and that is a data milestone that is above the national average when compared to other urban districts through the Council of the Great City Schools, and yet, it demonstrates that we are not over-obligating ourselves by having wiggle room, as I mentioned before. So, exciting times, but all of those things that Human Resources did was for the benefit of the district and ensuring that students had a great home on the first day of school.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board for Dr. Nolan? Director Winskill?
No, I don't have a question this time.
Okay. I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate your explanation of the teachers that are not in their area of formal training or education, so there's more of that information available that if parents were curious to find out, where would they find that information that you had sent some of us board members? Is that available publicly?
That is a great question. It is not currently, but we will work on making it available publicly. And while I am here in a somewhat public setting, I will share with you, those 22 people that are on for your recommendation tonight, each have a very specific plan, as I indicated earlier. Can't share the details of that because there's privacy around that, but certainly the global share out, we can do that on our Human Resources site.
Thanks.
All right, thank you for the report. First, that's terrific news with nutrition services, important part for our district, so I'm excited to hear that that is getting close to being a finalized deal. And thank you for sharing the follow-up on the paras. I know that we all have expressed to you, you know, our job is to make certain that all of our teachers, paras, and professionals are treated with dignity and respect, and we take every allegation seriously, and so I appreciate hearing that as people are offering comment, we've taken note and we're following up on that to make certain that the right course of action is taken. And I appreciate the report back on the start of the negotiation. Paras are invaluable in this district, and one of the primary responsibilities of the board is to set the expectation, so if paras are not feeling as valued as they are in this district, if it's in the classroom at the building level or in the community, you can rest assured that the board will make certain that the expectation is set, that we value paras for the important work that they provide on a daily basis. So I appreciate that update. With, so last year, we got off to a chaotic start with moving teachers and disrupting classrooms. It feels like, and the board came back and said, "We need to fix that now," it appears that we've had a much smoother transition. Is there still, we're just into the second full week, when are we going to know for certain, and how are we trending in terms of, is there going to be disruption all of a sudden next week for kids and families?
Well, I just might go ahead and call Steve Diedrich up here. I can tell you that we've actually begun some of those movements, working closely with the union, but I would invite Steve to explicitly share the information around this matter, which has been, knock on wood, relatively calm compared to last year.
We're following an adjusted timeline based on the start of the school year, but we're pleased to report that there's been good collaboration between Level Directors, Principals, TEA, and Human Resources and Payroll, I'm not Payroll, Budget Team, to determine where the needs are to adjust displacing a teacher versus adding a teacher to an alternative school. We're pleased to say that the numbers are lower than we anticipated, and we're trending towards each teacher that's going to be displaced to have a place in the coming days. We kicked off our first round of transfers discussion today with the intent to place six teachers this coming Monday in new classrooms.
Okay. So I will be interested to hear back when we have the final numbers, how we did, and if we've made significant improvement to identify why we believe that that improvement occurred, and if there's opportunity to get better. So as a learning organization, how do we continue to learn and get better? I did note, and we talked about this at the last board meeting, just the accuracy of our demographer, which helps in this, there's a lot of interdependencies, but to have a demographer, and I think ours has a crystal ball because the numbers from last board meeting, my calculations were .002%, that's pretty darn accurate for almost 30,000 kids, and noting that a large school district north of us was off by 700 students, and just the disruption that that sort of miscalculation creates. So thank you, being data-driven serves a purpose, there's a reason why we have such a focus on data, and it sounds like it's going to lead to a better start for kids and families this school year versus last year. Superintendent Santorno?
I also want to comment that, you know, some of the, you know, some of the changes in class sizes and teacher transfers comes from, you know, natural movement of parents and teachers, and people move in and out. So it's not always an indicator that, you know, we didn't do our work right or that it was bad data. There's a great video on the website that really is an animated video that we asked for in response, last year, the board asked for, to explain what happens and what are the impacts on class size. And so, I know we have a few speakers that are here tonight to talk about the class size, and so we just want you to understand all the different variables that go into, you know, figuring out whether you're over or under, and, you know, we've been going into schools and there's certainly our principals that are distraught because they're going to lose a teacher and they have to go through that change, and if you look at the video, it really points out, you know, what this animal is about and what you have to do to get those changes made. So I encourage people to take a look at that on the website.
Thank you.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
So DeLong, I know, that was, they had four classes that were way over, and I talked to some people from, some parents who were concerned about DeLong, and I imagine that's one that's having the problem solved. But it sounds like it's been a problem for a few years at that school, that they're always sort of underestimating the number of students. So if we can look at the ones that maybe every year turn up to have that issue, that maybe we don't have to do this next year. And then, for people who don't know, for kindergarten, there's some schools where the parents register early, the classes are full early, and there's many schools where the kindergarteners show up, even, they'll have half of the slots filled until like a week before school starts, so it's very difficult to sometimes determine what's going to happen. So, they all have their, every school has its own personality, it seems.
I'm pleased to report that DeLong has one of the teachers being transferred in effective Monday within an anticipated start date to be in front of the students on Wednesday.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Question, while we're talking about the start of school, I know I've received, we've all received a few emails about the calendar, and we've put you in a position where this board has said the first consideration is student achievement, there's interdependencies. Can you please, I know both Debbie and Enrica expressed to me an interest in better understanding the methodology, who we consulted, did we do this unilaterally, was it collaboratively, and what was our rationale for what the final calendar looks like?
Yeah, great, thank you. The district definitely heard the board's desire to put student achievement first, and that's what the calendar was built off of. We believe it gives our students the most time to prepare for key milestones and milestone assessments such as advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and... such as advanced placement, international baccalaureate. And when we think about the smarter balance, just because we had a delayed start doesn't mean our surrounding districts had a delayed start. And so that window will happen for everyone at the same time. And then let's think about graduation and how we want our seniors to be able to graduate on time. So it gives our seniors the opportunity to do that. It allows our students and community the time to continue in their community-based programs in the summer. And it does give us flexibility in the event that we have snow days, that we could tag on to the end of the year. But we first and foremost considered student achievement and what was best for students when developing this calendar. There was input from secondary education because we have semester breaks that needed to be considered, input from the leadership team, TEA. And we did use the survey that was sent to families and teachers in April of 2017 as a guide. Unfortunately, when it comes to a calendar, there's not a one-size-fits-all. But I can sincerely say that under the direction of the superintendent and the leadership team who worked on this through the input, again, of TEA and the consultation of the survey that was sent out in that April of 2017, that we believe we came up with a calendar that will absolutely support student achievement.
Go ahead.
I just want to also note that there's always going to be situations where families or staff already have pre-plans. And we work through those situations. And so if you're a family and you have a vacation out there, and there's, sometimes that's years in the planning. We will work with those families to make sure that there's opportunities for students to make up mislearning, different opportunities. Assistant Superintendent Nolan will work with TEA membership, other staff, and from other unions to say, so what are those plans and how do we work through them to support them? So the calendar is always a difficult issue and we always will have to help meet the needs in a case-by-case basis as well.
Superintendent Santorno.
I just want to, too, I think you said it well, Lisa, about the seniors. But I think it's important to note that we're required, we're required by our state, our state board to have so many days that the seniors are in school before they can graduate. So you can't add a lot of days at the end of the year because we've already set our graduations or set, you know, years ahead of time so that, you know, we rent the Tacoma Dome. So we can't change that. So we have to make sure we've plugged in enough days before graduation for them to go. And so that's one big thing. What you said about, you know, the assessments, making sure we have our students fully prepared and ready to look at that, that graduation in semesters, I know I'm repeating what you said, but I just want to make sure that people understand it wasn't just, yeah, let's just take away this or take away that. A lot of thought went into it.
And I've received feedback on both sides of the issue. So people that have concerns and people that were supportive, like a lot of issues we deal with, they're complexed and nuanced and interdependent. And the other email that I know we were receiving is, when are you going to have this decided? So there was an intense desire to have it settled, to try to do it in a way that first and foremost was to the benefit of student achievement. And I believe that in most of the school handbooks, there is guidance on how this is treated to excuse your students if there's planned family vacation. So those are available online. I would encourage families also to look at that. There is some flexibility around accommodating family vacations and other time commitments during those periods. Any other comments? Director Leon?
Thank you. So it looks like it was a thoughtful process with all the stakeholders kind of thought about and their input brought in. You mentioned the evaluation tool from a couple of years ago from parents. So there are some parents that were concerned that their voices weren't heard, but it sounds like it was for an evaluation. It just wasn't new this year. But there's a lot of parents that hopefully gave their input to this topic in the past, it sounds like. And there've been constituents concerned about the schedule being some kind of retribution towards some group or another, and it doesn't feel like or seem like that this is the case. I just want to try to reassure people that there's a lot of thought to this process. And it's important to hear about this Tacoma Dome rental issue that graduations can't change very quickly. So thank you. Director Wensko.
And I just wanted to make a comment about, my brain, I've lost it. Somebody right before school started, and this is before we knew we were going to have a strike, said that they had plans to go out of the country right when school was out. So for those people, it's, you just go and talk to the principal and things will be made right. So it's a little more difficult when you have high school students to leave early, but for elementary and middle school, it's a little easier, I think, because the finals aren't predicated on that, but.
And just to provide you with some reassurance, we will not be taking any sort of truancy action against students who miss school because of calendar changes.
Any questions or comments from our student representatives since you are the ones that this is built around?
Um, I don't think so. I kind of do.
Sure.
So yeah, I understand you guys, like, thought this through and, like she said, because I did have a question about you guys involving like the parents or the students or even the community. So it is good to know that you guys used a survey from last year. And now that she said that it doesn't count against like students not coming school, that's, I think that was like my biggest worry. Because I know like I do have like plans for certain days that I'm going to have to miss. And I just think like education's really important. So missing those days is going to be kind of hard. But if it's not counted against a student, then I don't think it's that big of a deal.
Dr. Garcia.
I just have to provide one technical aspect. For students, your parents still have to give permission.
Right.
I put my younger brain in there and I reminded myself that I just got permission by the school board and the superintendent to miss these days.
Yeah.
That is not accurate. You still have to get a permission to miss those days.
But if you're 18, you can write your own notes.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And one last issue before we move on, that I've had a lot of constituent inquiries about, is the reliability of our buses. So Dr. Nolan, this may not be in your purview, but if somebody could please speak to some of the early challenges we've had with buses, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Fletcher is here, I believe he was. Is he still here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Come on up, Mr. Fletcher. No, you need to come to the mic. It's called putting you on the spot.
Yes, we have had some challenges when we switched over to a new contractor. We did it so late and things just didn't fall into place. But they're getting better. I was just at Grant this afternoon and the driver had a route that was totally out of whack. So I rode the bus with him and we got the kids home on time. And those are the Grant parents who we had did all this work for. We had a video for them. And then we switched contractors. We didn't have the equipment on the buses. But overall, we're doing okay and we're going to get better. So that's it.
So Michael, can you tell the public what the process is if they're having continually late buses? Or who do they call? How do, who do they let know that they need some adjustments?
Call first student. Call them first. If it's special needs, you call the district. And they're trying to be real responsive. Are we short? Yes, we are. But we're going to make it work and call, you can always call my number. Everybody in the district got my cell number and I'm getting ready to give it right now. It's air code 253-405-2407. So if you have a problem, I have no problem with taking it on. My office number is 571-1901. But I would ask, don't give it to the media, though. My cell number. So like I said, whatever we can do with transportation, we're willing to do. And we're just, whatever we can do, we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you. The transportation issue, as a parent of school-aged children, it's challenging enough to hand my child over to someone for six and a half hours a day, let alone entrusting them to ride on the bus and making certain that we have buses that are there when they're supposed to be there. So I am encouraged, we will continue, the board will continue to monitor to make certain that we are providing reliable service every day with an understanding that sometimes there are scheduling hiccups. But that should really be the exception and those buses should be there, ready for kids and families when they're expected to be here. So I did put you on the spot, but thank you. That is another issue that I know we've been hearing about in the last week or so. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm looking at the schedule on the website and it doesn't say the last day of school for seniors. Do you know what that is?
Garcia.
Yeah, it'll be school by school and you'll work with your school because each graduation is a little different. So it's not one common day. So for example, it'll vary from Sammy versus Stadium. And it's based on when your graduation is. As the superintendent mentioned, there's, you have to meet a minimum threshold of days. And so typically that will even go to, for some schools, the day of their graduation or the day before. So each school will publish that calendar for their respective students.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items related to the superintendent's report? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. And for tonight, and we want to hear from each and every one of you, we have an estimated 40 cards. So rather than our normal allotment of three minutes, we're going to reduce that to two minutes. You'll have two minutes and there'll be a ding at the first minute. You'll have one minute left. And if you hear comments from those that precede you, if you could abbreviate your comment by just affirming support for what's been stated, we still want to hear from you. We could have limited the amount of public comment to a certain amount of time, but we want to make certain that any of you that have taken the time to show up and put your name on a card and stand up to let us know your thoughts have an opportunity to do so. And with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
On top of that, I was late into the auditorium. So usually I try to get people in the order that they came in and turned in the cards and I wasn't able to do that. So I apologize for the order of the cards. And there's a variety of topics tonight. So we'll have a real potpourri of what's going on. Number one, Wendy Morris to speak about Next Move. And second is Deborah Lavagnino to speak around para pay.
I am here today to say thank you to the school board for your ongoing support for the Next Move internship program. As a nonprofit agency in Pierce County, especially, and we're based in Tacoma, Associated Ministries has been blessed to have Next Move interns for three years now. We are starting with our eighth person next Tuesday, who is a young man from SOTA. And one thing I wanted to share with you is, this previous spring, we had a young lady who came in extremely shy, didn't really want to talk to me, anybody, but she wanted to learn. And so we took the time and by the end of her semester, she was interviewing people, talking with, you know, strangers. And considering we work with people experiencing homelessness, that was a great piece for her to have to grow. So we do, as a community member and as a representative of a local nonprofit, we do want to say thank you for your support and we hope that that program will continue to get your support because it is valuable, particularly to the students. Thank you.
Deborah Lavagnino, apologize if I pronounced your name incorrectly, and then followed by Andre Stout.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a teacher at Stanley and I'm, and I know a lot of other people in the room because I was substitute last year. Leading us into why I am here, I spent a lot of time substituting as a para last year. And now I am, I was hired as LRC Special Education Teacher at Stanley. And so I have a really interesting collection of perspective and experience about this situation. Gosh, I better edit this. All right. Working as a para educator in special education was culture shock. The amount of time, patience, and energy was exhausting. Teams supported their students, their teacher, and each other. I learned to jump in when needed, when work needed to be done. And that work might have been washing dishes, feeding a child, or redirecting student behavior. What that looks like in special education is that when you take a child to lunch, you want to keep them from throwing their tray like a frisbee. Redirecting behavior means that you don't want to be injured yourself and you might have to restrain a child. And trying to find a time to help clean the classroom means that other paras in your room are maintaining the comb in your classroom so that you can get just daily housekeeping done. Those paras start their salaries, their, excuse me, their hourly wage at $13.77. And they do more work than the teachers do. This year, I'm at Stanley, like I said, LRC Special Education Teacher, and the position is new to me. I think I'm probably on the list of 22 people that is being allowed to teach because I am highly qualified. I just don't have the piece of paper. That, oh, one more thing, one more thing. Okay, just like the Academy Awards, I have two paras with me this year and they are absolutely invaluable to me. In conclusion, our para educator pay school is an embarrassment. Our para educator pay scale is disrespectful and it needs to be dramatically increased. We need to value our para educators. If not, we are undervaluing an entire team of teachers.
Andre Stout, followed by Barb Brandel-Saley.
Hello, I'm Andre Stout, principal at Truman Middle School. It's my third year in Tacoma. And I'm the co-president of the Tacoma Principal Association. And I came here to actually show my appreciation for our leadership. I know that strangers don't argue or fight, family do. And we're a big family here. We're in the middle of some challenging times, but we have great leadership, great support. This staff here, as a leader, as a three-year person in this district, the support we get from everyone, from HR, from our CNI, everyone, from our superintendent, our deputy, is incredible. I hope we get through this. I know it's some challenging times for you guys, but you guys are great leaders. You guys have done a great job in this district. I love working here. I love my team. I love my parents. They out here, too. I've seen them. I love my teachers who just got through going through this. I just hope we can all get through this and be this great family that I walked into three years ago. And I appreciate you guys' leadership tremendously. Thank you so much.
Barb, followed by Martin Lund.
I usually come with a little sticky note because I speak from my heart rather than a piece of paper. You know that we have homeless para educators. You know we have paras that live in their cars. You know our paras are already underpaid. So I thought I'd do a little different tonight. I have a list of things that we do. And if I offend any of you, I apologize. I tried my best to give you a list that's accurate. Just some of the things that we do. We have the ability to communicate with our peers, teachers, and administration, and more importantly, the students. We need to be familiar with educational terms and acronyms. We need to adjust our teaching styles. We have a knowledge of different learning styles. We have a knowledge in specific content areas, including reading, math, autism, I'm a speech person, teeming communication and problem solving. Oh dang. Oh dang, I hate that. Okay, to step in when other paras are absent, we take charge of the classroom when the certified teacher is absent. We serve as coaches, mentors, and counselors as we work with some of the hardest to serve and teach both students. We assist in bringing positive changes to our students' lives and helping them develop in many ways. We maintain a safe and enriching environment. We help assess the students' academic needs. Sometimes we work with multiple teachers. Other times, we're patient, kind, natured, and have a special relationship with all teachers. Many students come to us before they come to teachers. I've had children come to me and tell me that they're homeless too. We are so valuable that we deserve to be recognized with that. My shirt says, "I make a difference." My shirts should say, "Para educators make a difference."
Martin Lund, followed by Tanya Duran.
Hello, my name is Martin Lund, I'm a self-contained autism teacher at Lion Elementary and I just wanted to communicate how important I think it is for us to pay our paras a living wage. In my experience, I've started in this district as a substitute para and then was a para for two years at Lion Elementary in the self-contained room. And that's a position that I couldn't have held without my wife's income supporting me. And it eventually led to me becoming a teacher and I think it's kind of a sad thing that you couldn't do that on a para wage of itself. I mean, it would be awesome if it could because I think we'd get some awesome teachers out of it. Without para support, my context just simply couldn't exist. We couldn't serve the 12 students that we do and I'm so thankful every day that I have the paras that I do in my room. I know personally of two paras that make ends meet by going and donating blood twice a month for an extra $300 and I think that is something that we as a district need to come together and correct. I also know of at least one para who's moving out of district so that she can afford the cost of living because as we know Tacoma's cost of living is increasing as we speak. And I also know that there's parents that value our para pros so much for all the support that they give our students every day. Thank you.
Tanya Duran, followed by Jillian Gutierrez.
Good evening and thank you, I'm Tanya Duran, I'm Executive Director of the Children's Museum of Tacoma and I come to offer some reflection that's rooted in gratitude. This week, the Children's Museum had our annual luncheon where we spend time reflecting on accomplishments of not just the last year but over time. And we've come to see ourselves as more than a museum. We're members of the Whole Child Initiative, we're members of Graduate Tacoma like so many others are, members of First Five Fundamentals or Project Child Success. And so I'm thinking, you know, as we've started a childcare center, as we've started a preschools, we've done these things sort of coloring outside the lines, I'm reminded that when I first started at the Children's Museum, we didn't have much of a relationship with TPS. And I remember Carla, when you came to Tacoma, you and I sat down and I met, we met and I said, "What is TPS's early learning philosophy? What's the strategy?" And you very sort of, I think appropriately said, "We're just sort of getting started on that and look at what's happened." And we now, the Children's Museum and Tacoma Public Schools, we co-operate a preschool. I mean, that's just mind-blowing partnership. So I really want to offer my gratitude to the board and the leadership for being visionary and for welcoming partnership and embracing partnership. We can't do it alone and I know that because of you, the Children's Museum's a stronger gift to our community and I hope you feel the same way. So thank you very, very much for your leadership.
Jillian Gutierrez, followed by Betty A. Neal.
Hi, my name is Jillian Gutierrez, I am a kindergarten teacher at Maryline Elementary and the TEA Vice President. I'm coming to talk to you about classroom overages. I heard the conversation, I saw the PowerPoint, and you may think that this is a seamless transition, but for our students, it's not. Currently, many of our schools are at cap or over cap. We're at 29 students in both classrooms, in our kindergarten rooms. And for those of you who haven't taught kindergarten before, every extra student over that cap is exponential growth. They've never been to school before, they don't know what to do. It's like herding kittens. We're asking for help. The district has the ability to provide us with some subs or some extra support and none of that is being done at our level to help out. So those students are suffering every day. They're not getting quality instruction, the WA Kids Benchmarks assessments are not being done yet. I haven't even been able to assess my own students on regular basic skills because we simply are trying to manage. And I think that that's really detrimental to the kids. So I would encourage you in the next few years or even in this year, to really try to supply subs to those schools that you know have overages on the first days of school until you can get those displacements sorted out. Also looking at the calendar, it's very difficult, you know, as a teacher and as a mother, looking that we're losing days on our winter vacation and our spring vacation. The notice from HR said that we are to email Lisa Nolan about our extenuating circumstances, but really unless we're going on vacation out of the country, we are expected, which is the language, to change our dates and our plans. Well, my children are in childcare, so our childcare is really teacher-friendly and it's great, but they also take their vacations when we take our vacations. So currently, right now, during winter and spring break, I have no childcare for my children. So do I bring them to school? Do you want my new infant there while I'm teaching kindergarten to everybody? Those things are things that I would hope that we would look at because you have a lot of parents in your teaching force to help out with those changes. TEA provides a lot of different alternatives and I would really encourage re-looking at that calendar structure, coming up with a better compromise that works for your students, your community, your parents, and your teachers.
Betty Neal, followed by Rachel Telford.
Good evening, thanks for having us here. I do want to, what you said, that we do have highly qualified teachers. You also have highly, highly qualified paras in the district. And we're all here, there's more of us here. And I do have to give my little sentiment to Valerie Olson, we just saw her and she was the love of our life when she worked in our classroom, so we will miss her. What I want to say is that we are being overworked. I am going to ask you to please look in getting a sub for the ortho classroom at Truman Middle School because we two paras in Ms. Miller's classroom with the autism program, we are being stretched to the limit. We have so many, we know that thing about as duties are signed. You see these sheets of paper here? This is what we're doing in condition, other responsibilities we take on. I wish I had copies for all of you. Ms. Glave and I share, we're program paras. Ms. Liz is sitting in the audience there and she's a one-to-one. Other expectations in lieu of what we do in our classroom, you know, and the climate of our students this year, they're coming in with more disabilities in the blended autism classroom. So we are taking steps to go upstairs, leave the classroom, and I know someone mentioned when the paras are out, then that particular classroom is not getting 100% of us because we're offsetting, you know, another job in ortho. Students that have seizures, we're going to PE with them and one, you have to be, I mean, right there with the student, then there's six other students in the PE classroom. So I'm concentrated here. That leaves me like I'm not watching these other kids. This is two classrooms we're working with. So we need to get that taken care of. And yes, we want more money. So I don't have to...
Ma'am, your two minutes is up, we appreciate your comments, thank you.
Rachel Telford, followed by Dina Alokolak, I believe.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Telford and I have three children at three schools here in the district. I've been watching the board meetings online and I have been seeing you talk about reconciliation and transparency. What troubles me is that what I'm seeing is not that reconciliation or that transparency. We're seeing the same behavior and lack of communication that we saw during the strike, especially in the recent communication regarding the budget. And if we don't hear something from the state legislator by November, we're going to have to look at cuts. Reconciliation doesn't look like pointing a finger somewhere else, especially when the public knows about the mismanagement that has happened here. It is hard to believe that reconciliation and transparency are more than lip surface when we don't see accountability. Funding for paras would be a great way to show that you're ready to reconcile. These people do some of the most basic work at fulfilling the basic needs of our kids and without paras, some of our special needs students wouldn't have access to education at all. Reconciliation without accountability is not, it's not a true reconciliation, it's putting up with each other. I hope that the people here that went through the election process are here because they want to make a change. I want to believe that. I want to see what you're going to do to make sure that we don't end up in this mess again next year when negotiations come up again. Thank you very much for your time.
Dina Alokolak, followed by Frances Medina.
Good evening, my name is Dina Alokolak, I have four children in Tacoma Public Schools, three of them attend Bryant Montessori and my oldest has started at Sammy. Tacoma has some really great alternative schools and as a board, you should be proud of those offerings. I've noticed that you really like to take credit for those offerings, but you don't like to fund the schools like they need to be funded. Bryant is, our middle school is bursting at the seams. We have 28 middle school kids in a classroom with 27 seats and 20 textbooks. We have nine portables on our playlot. Montessori is geared toward teaching individual children, it's geared toward outdoor play. We don't have a field anymore because there's now a portable in the middle of it. Our children can't even play soccer. We're a hilltop school, this is the only lawn some of these children have, and they can't play soccer during the day. It's outrageous. On top of this, Montessori doesn't happen without para educators, it just doesn't happen. And I am appalled to learn the pay scale of our para educators. You're not paying them a living wage? They're homeless? You have to be kidding me. You want to take all of the credit for these terrific schools and they are terrific schools. You need to fund them appropriately.
Frances Medina, followed by Therese Walz.
Hi, I'm Frances Medina and I'm a para with Head Start. Before all that, I am a mother of four, from 38 to 21-years-old, 21-year-old, third-year college out of state. And I have 10 grandchildren and I'm a widow. So I've been supporting my daughter, covering what doesn't, you know, she does two work studies and takes 17 credits. I work three jobs. I shouldn't have to do that. I'm almost 60-years-old and I never expected that to happen to me. Because this is a para position. Head Start, the people in the classroom, the teachers, advocate, the assistants, we're all paras that work directly with the children daily in the classroom. We don't get the cert pay. Some of us do, I have my certification. I've had my BA since back in the 80s. I went back and got an AA in lower ed to try, you know, doing preschool again because it's been so many years. But we don't get paid for what we do. And I'm also bilingual. And our duties, like the past two days, I have two kids coming in, they're going to have EpiPens, food allergies, anaphylactic. I've been dealing back and forth between the nurses and the doctor's office trying to get the paperwork to get these children into school. And I greet the parents. So mostly, a lot of the time, we are, advocates are the first contact. We register, take their intake. We have to look at private financial documents to qualify them. And we're backups in the classroom. Last year, I felt like a floater, there was so much classroom coverage. When somebody's not gone, not there, even if they get a sub, we have to go in because we have to do classroom coverage. So that we're not getting our own job done. I manage 40 caseload, 40 families, keep track of all their files. Any new information goes, I have to get to the parents, you know, to the, between the parents and the teachers. So it's a lot of responsibility, a whole lot more I didn't even get to talk about, but I think something needs to change.
Teresa Walz, followed by Holly Bamford-Hunt.
Hi, my name is Teresa Walz and I have five kids who are in Tacoma schools or receive speech services. First, I would like to say thank you. Thank you to our teachers and our paras who are here, who work day in and day out with our students. Thank you to the board and our central administration for helping me realize that I need to be here to advocate for my kids. Thank you for igniting a spark within our community and our parents so that we are here to stand up for our kids. I have more that I could say, but I want to focus first all on the dates specifically, January 3rd and 4th and April 1st and 2nd, winter break and spring break. Throughout the strike, our community partners such as Metro Parks, YMCA, Edgeworks Climbers, and many, many others opened their doors for our students and provided programs for them. These new dates on the calendar are going to have a negative impact on these community partners and many others who offer winter break and spring break camps for our students. Those camps were scheduled last May when calendars were set. These new dates also impact families with planned vacation and they know their kids are going to be absent. These make-up dates should give all our kids the best opportunities to learn and have achievement and not just be like, okay, you don't have to be there that day, we'll excuse you. We could have students attend on data days when they are in the groove of learning, use the snow days built-in, and add a few days to finish on that Friday, finishing out the week so that parents don't have to pay for partial weeks of daycare, which is pretty expensive now. And then our teachers can make up those data days in the end of June to plan for what's coming up next year. I ask you to please reconsider this calendar and how you can show respect and hear our feedback from parents and community partners. Thank you.
Holly Hunt, followed by Hannah Lee, sorry, Hannah Lee's next.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. As board, I'm Holly Bamford-Hunt, Board Chair for Foundation for Tacoma Students, supporting all the partners who make up the Graduate Tacoma Movement, led by our school district leadership. And I'm here with a message of gratitude for, to our board and Superintendent Carla Santurino for your continued leadership in partnering with our community to support the success of our community's children. The Tacoma School District has shown a huge commitment to creating and sustaining authentic community partnerships and I've seen this personally over these past seven years. It's really made a difference in creating opportunities for students who otherwise would not have access to them. Your commitments resulted in 86% graduation rates and dramatic increases across demographics in graduation rates. The district's commitment to these partnerships, including the Whole Child Partnership, your transparency and shared decision-making based on data, has not only impacted students positively, but has also fueled aspirations for other community organizations, I've seen this, working for change in our city. You've set the bar high and we need to keep up these intentional partnerships as a community as there's certainly more work to be done for and with our students and families. We know you're in a challenging situation right now, addressing the inequitable funding landscape and taking care of our teachers, our para educators, our staff, who are, and are caring people educating our students. So we want you to know your community partners are with you and behind you as you support and address these challenges ahead. We have the children of Tacoma in mind. Thanks.
Hannah Lee, followed by Cindy Kennedy.
Good evening, I'm Hannah Lee, a junior at Henry Foss High School and concertmaster of the Henry Foss Chamber Orchestra. They say that education is the key to success. The definition of success varies per person. It could mean the workforce, military, or higher education. Tacoma Public School District's motto is "Every Student, Every Day." They're doing a good job implementing various CTE classes, JROTC-related programs, and options for high achievers such as Advanced Placement or International Baccalaureate courses. However, the trend seems to be the opposite with our music programs. However, the trend seems to be the opposite with our music programs. A current dilemma in many different schools is the declining support of various fine arts programs. Although the benefits of participation in the fine arts are numerous, from creating a more creative generation to increasing standardized test scores, many students find themselves stuck at the crossroads between taking an extra AP course, a CTE class to fulfill graduation requirements, or pursuing an IB diploma like I am currently. Yes, the number of students in music programs is declining, but I believe that even if one student wishes to follow their passion of the arts, the school should do everything in its power to support that passion and make those classes available. Thank you.
Cindy Kennedy, followed by Josh Zarling.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Cindy Kennedy. I've taught in Tacoma for 35 years, and I'm here to support our pares. I've, obviously, over 35 years, have had an opportunity to see some pretty outstanding para professionals and who should have probably been certificated teachers as well. They've handled the classroom well, they've partnered with me, they've partnered with other teachers, and I just applaud all of you. Thank you. I know how important data is, so I did a quick little survey, and I wanted to find out how often school board members and superintendents come to visit the special needs classrooms. I know that when visiting the schools, it's highlighted with the classrooms, but our pares are in the special needs classrooms quite often, if not always. And I'd really like to invite you to go watch one of those classrooms, and it's a seamless dance. It's amazing. And I just want you to see and value our pares, our teachers, which I really believe you do, but I would like to see them also receive a living wage that, I mean, hearing homelessness, living out of vans, cars, just, and, I mean, tonight I heard that a person's having to decide not to go to the doctor because they can't afford it. So let's help them out. That's what I'm playing for, so thank you for your time.
Josh Zarling, followed by Hannah Gibson.
Thank you, Board, for having me today. Today, I'd like to share a bit of my perspective and a bit of my story. I am Josh Zarling. I'm the Loud and Proud Principal of Northeast Tacoma Elementary, and I, this is my third year in Tacoma. And some of the Tacoma principals, and I had a chance to talk over the summer, and one of the things we wanted to make sure is that the board, the community, our staffs we work with, as well as our students and families, know how much we appreciate the work that everyone, everyone is doing. I've learned so much in the last few years being here in Tacoma, and I really want to appreciate each one of you by name, but I'm not able to do that because I have a minute and 20 left. The paraeducators I work with, the teachers I work with, the classified staff I work with teach me every single day. In addition to their, their teaching me, I really want to appreciate the mentors that have taken a vested interest in me. Vice President Viall, Superintendent Santorino, Deputy Superintendent Garcia have mentored me and improved me as a leader, as a principal, as a father of a child in fifth grade, and as a husband. Each of the members of the cabinet have taken time to help me become a better leader so that when I go back and I work with my team, I am better for it. I never thought that I would learn as much and get as much improvement in myself, as a principal, and as a leader, and as a person when I came to Tacoma. These few years that I've been in Tacoma, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate you. The board, as well as our leadership, have a deep sense of the why of our work and what we're doing. But how we lead and how we interact with each other is special in Tacoma. And I can tell you right now, being able to work with everyone in this room, we work best together when we support one another and we come together as a community. Thank you all. I truly appreciate each one of you.
Hannah Gibson, followed by Cheryl Armstrong.
Hello, my name is Hannah Gibson, and I, first of all, I'm a completely educated by Tacoma Public Schools, and I want to say thank you for that. I'm a graduate of SOTA, and I appreciate all of the wonderful programs that have been afforded, and I hope that they don't disappear. I'm also the beginning of my parenting in schools. I have a child in first grade and then two more on the way. And I'm also a co-parent. And my problem here is that this schedule, my co-parenting schedule is specific to the school schedule, and it's divided by, completely by the school schedule. And sometimes that requires scheduling holidays and things like that on alternate days. And for me personally, with this proposal of the Christmas schedule, my time is going to be cut in half for how much time I get to spend with my kids in the holidays. And I know that's a lot of parents that share custody, and it's not, it might just be, oh, two days here and two days there, but it's a significant portion. I might get no time during spring break to have days off with my kids without pulling them from school. And in addition to that, it's family time in general is, you know, who's, we plan for this time. I plan every minute of my day with my kids because I don't have every day with my kids. And in addition to that, I would hope when my children get a little bit older, I am interested in becoming an educator in the school system as a paraeducator, but I don't know if I can afford to do that. You are limiting your options to have future paraeducators. I don't know if it's financially a doable thing to invest my time in going through the education process to do that so I can spend more time with my kids and have their schedule. So I would hope that you consider family's time in addition to the future of your education and who your teachers are gonna be.
Cheryl Armstrong, followed by Sharice Brown.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Armstrong. I'm a driver trainer with Tacoma Transportation, which means we drive special needs. And we're here today to ask the school board to try to find a way to make it more appealing to work as a bus driver for Tacoma in the special needs program. The teachers' union unfortunately hit us hard because if we don't work, we don't get paid. We, we have deferral that ended on the 5th, and so for those seven days of the strike, we were only allowed 12 hours' worth of work. And there were four other extra hours that we could've, but we were the only unit locked out of work. We weren't allowed that. Everyone else could but transportation. And then the 3.1 COLA that we thought we were going to get, now we find out it's only 1.9. And when you see how much the teachers were handsomely awarded, it's really hard. And we're always told how much we're appreciated, how we are the face of Tacoma, we meet the parents, you know, we communicate with the schools, we let the teachers know what kind of day they had, what the parent, what it was like when we receive them, how, it helps the classroom. We set the tone for the day. But then, all those words that we hear, actions speak far louder than words, and we feel like we've been very disrespected. So we are down 10 drivers. Because of the strike, we lost all the trainees that we had. They needed a paycheck. They couldn't work, they couldn't wait around. We lost them. So now we're working with even less. Our dispatcher had 21 hours of overtime. I invite any of you, please, show up Monday morning, 5 o'clock AM. Watch what she goes through, trying to divide, trying to, the route saying, can someone pick this one up? Can you add this on your route? We're overworked. I have a lot of my coworkers here, you can ask. We're putting in 10-plus hours every single day. It's not safe. Thank you very much.
Sharice Brown, followed by Roberta Kilgore.
Hi, my name is Sharice. My job is to transport our nation's most valuable resource over the highways and byways with the utmost care and compassion, regardless of weather, road conditions, or careless and reckless drivers, to safely deliver the nation's most valuable resources to school and from school, to field trips, sporting events, unable to predict what may happen on that route. I'm a special needs driver. I have Tacoma School District written across the side of the bus that I drive. I have driven for a contractor, and so I have had 60 middle school kids behind me driving down the road. Today, I have 12 special needs elementary students, some who have seizures, which I can't do anything about but time them while I'm driving down the freeway. I have, I have played, I have transported fuel, packages, even water, and been paid so much more than what I receive by transporting these children. So I kind of wonder what's really valued in our state. There are so many school, programs in this, in this district, and I am grateful for the opportunity to connect with these students, with the teachers, the coaches, and the parents. I know other districts offer the same, but with much nicer benefits. I just want to kind of skip through here because I don't want to go over time. I've considered picking up a second job. I get up at 4 o'clock in the morning to be to work on time. I don't really get a full working day, but taking a second job and then getting into a 32,000-pound vehicle with our nation's most valuable cargo, stressed out about whether I'm gonna be able to make rent, pay the bills on time, and I'm gonna even look out for people who are texting while they're driving with those kids on board. Thank you.
Roberta Kilgore, followed by Sally Perkins.
First, I'd like to say I'm also a bus driver for the Tacoma School District. I don't work for the contractor. I'd like to acknowledge that the bus drivers signed their contract last year. For this year, we'll receive 1% raise plus the COLA, and we honestly believe that the teachers truly deserve their 14.4% raise. So do all the other departments who care for our students, pares, substitute teachers, food service, and maintenance. As is true with many school districts across the US, T-10 is short on bus drivers. We were short last year on drivers. But since June, five drivers have retired, four others found better-paying jobs elsewhere. And the new subs that we trained last spring all moved on to other things. We're asking our friends, our family, people we meet, the waitress at IHOP to become a bus driver. They won't do it. They won't even consider it for the pay we receive. Being short-staffed creates chaos. At the start of this year, we were two drivers short. That was utilizing all of the permanent and substitute drivers. Routes are divided into other routes. Those routes run long. We get to schools late in the morning, students missing the first 15 to 30 minutes, sometimes more of class every day. I took a student in today an hour late, and that's what it's gonna be scheduled for until we get a bus driver that can pick him up on time. Every day, he's gonna miss an hour. We get to, we get to school late in the afternoon, and that imposes on the school staff who's already tired from working with those kids all day long. They need us to be there when school gets out. Some of our drivers drive for three or more elementaries in the afternoon, and you can't be to all of them at 3:30. One of my coworkers has to decide between taking home a diabetic student before 4 o'clock or picking up her six emotional behavior students. Now, mind you, the longer those students wait, the more amped up they get. We have parents upset because we're late in the morning and we're late in the afternoon. Our dispatchers and trip coordinator are out driving the bus. Communication, it becomes difficult when your dispatcher is driving. We want to be the best transportation staff out there, but to do that, we need your help. We need more drivers, and you're having a hard time attracting and retaining them with the wages you're offering.
Sally Perkins, followed by Alexander Adterly.
Tonight, I'm testifying as an individual and as a person of faith, looking at the district through the lens of your role as a fair and just employer in the city of Tacoma. TPS is the fifth-largest employer in the Tacoma area, and so your employment practices have a significant impact on the well-being of our community. First question, are you paying your employees a living wage? They don't seem to think so tonight. I know that it is difficult to figure out how much money it takes to live a modest life in Tacoma, but you're hearing tonight that people are really struggling. So how will the district achieve living wages for all of its employees? What does your compensation system say is the most valued work being done in your district? Right now, it seems to say that administrative functions are the most valuable. But are those roles, are those administrative roles actually worth eight times your paraeducators' roles? So how does the district achieve a more equitable compensation system that recognizes the value of various roles fairly and appropriately? Your paraeducators help students navigate emotional struggles, physical limitations, severe health problems, all manner of challenges so that each student can learn and succeed in school. Your paraeducators are literally worth their weight in gold. What paraeducators bring to their work is love. They love their work, they love their students, they love seeing how their work can transform their students' lives. Given how much the district values and appreciates the social-emotional aspect of education, paraeducators look to me like they embody the adult half of the social-emotional equation. How can the district best show how it values this amazing social-emotional investment by its paraeducators? I believe that TPS wants to be one of the best employers in the city. There are important opportunities right now to address living wages, the value of different roles within the district, and the value of social-emotional work on behalf of your students. Your pares love their work. They need you to love them back.
Alexander, followed by Grant Ruby.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I obviously only have two minutes, so I'll be very quick and brief. You are in direct competition with everybody that holds a CDL, period. Every other position that is out there in this, in this state, you are in direct competition, and you are failing that competition significantly so. We will no longer be satiated by your benign words. It is what you do that defines you, okay? It's not what you say. Seriously. All right? ADA, you guys know what that is, the American Disabilities Act. Good stuff. Okay, so we're talking about strikes and different other things like that. I have a better one. I will personally make sure all of my bus drivers out here see Honey Bucket and garbage truck applications, and you will lose your fleet. You will lose your fleet. This is an inevitable outcome. This isn't just me personally, this is everyone affiliated. Anybody that has a CDL normally starts at $25 an hour and goes up to 30, 32, 35, and it just goes from there. Now, I'm not trying to make you necessarily compete with them, but you should compete with them. You should definitely consider this before you lose your fleet because this is an inevitable outcome, an inevitable outcome. And I know you guys sit on Mount Olympus and everything, and that's nice. And I appreciate everything you do, and I appreciate the fact that you guys have so much education and everything, but we're in the real world. Okay? We're in the real world. All right. We have, we have no driving infractions, right? We have perfectly clean records, and in every, you know, we're all white knights, I just happen to be black. So, so we could, and we could drive, we could drive anything on the road. Everything that's in front of you is brought here on a truck. Everything in front of you is brought here on a truck. Even this, my badge, was brought here on a truck, everything. And we could be driving that truck and making a lot more money. Seriously. Definitely consider this at every board meeting. Definitely consider this, period. Nobody under the age of 40 is even interested based off, based off of your medical and everything else. I don't even have medical. Are you serious? You can't afford that, right? I gotta survive. Just be, just be honest with yourself, be honest with the people here. Honestly, thank you for, for your time.
Grant Ruby, followed by Azilia Shomassar, I believe.
Hi, I'm Grant Ruby, math teacher at Lincoln High School and Lincoln's own rep on the TEA Executive Board. There are many topics I wish I could address tonight. The loss of four classroom computers in every room of Lincoln High School, even though voters passed a technology levy last fall. The surprising incompetence of first student to pick up and safely deliver Tacoma students to their destinations. The volumes of texts, emails, and Facebook and Twitter comments in response to the recent calendar update, and more. However, tonight, I would like to address the bargaining of this body with AFT. I believe it is unconscionable that TPS would pay poverty wages barely above the state minimum wage to our support educators. This board should be embarrassed that our paraeducators commonly work second- This board should be embarrassed that our paraeducators commonly work second and third jobs simply to make ends meet. Tonight, district representatives spoke of the importance of partnerships, high level of respect for our paraeducators, and the richness of this district. Do not let these words stand as lip service. Back your words with actions. Please, I ask you, please, do not make the same mistakes you made in bargaining with TEA. You have the funds. You have a promise from state legislators to fix the shortfall next year. Pay our support professionals what they deserve, a living wage which shows them the respect they have earned, which illustrates your words, and which allows them the financial independence to work one job.
Jenny Fowler followed by Tina Taylor.[676.64][676.64]60.0
My name is Azilia Shomassar. I like school. I really enjoy math. My teacher, Mrs. Moore at Washington Elementary, is really nice, and I like being in class. I learned that some of her vacation days might get taken away. I don't think it's right to take days away from people's vacation time. They might have plans with family or already spent money on vacations. If they miss those, they might feel sad about that. Maybe here's another way we can make the days up without taking away from our vacations. Thank you Tacoma Public School Board.
Jenny Fowler followed by Tina, oh, or Tina Taylor, sorry.
I'm Jenny Fowler.
Okay, good. Jenny Fowler followed by Tina Taylor.
First of all, I want to commend you for such a wonderful job with your speech. Thank you for coming. Tonight, I'm here, my name's Jenny Fowler, and I am here as the chief negotiator for the Tacoma paraeducators. In 1991, I began as a PA-three para, and I made eight dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour. Minimum wage was four and a quarter, so I made four dollars and thirteen cents more than if I worked minimum wage. At the time, the average price of gas was a dollar fourteen a gallon. I could buy more than three gallons of gas with that. And fast forward to 2017, beginning paras at PA-three make fourteen dollars and forty-two cents. Minimum wage was twelve dollars. That's only two dollars and forty-two cents more a gallon, which is less than a gallon of gas. That's only comparing to minimum wage. It's not comparing to other bargaining units, and the pay gap just keeps widening. What a bargain the district is getting for all the skills our paras have and all the things we do for students, staff, and families. Tonight, I'm serving up a platter of letters from paras and teachers, listing the importance and duties and skills of our paras. Please take the time to read them, chew them over, discover our true value, and then offer us an appropriate wage increase.
Tina Taylor followed by Tamara.
Hi, I'm Tina Taylor. I'm here tonight as a Montessori teacher. So in Montessori, we do a great deal of modeling, and we do a great deal of listening, we do a great deal of following the child and trying to find out what matters to them, what questions do they have. So I listen carefully at every board meeting since January. The last board meeting, I heard questions from four board members. Mr. Hines, I listened carefully. You can go to the OSPI website, and you can find all the information you'd like to know about fund balances. It's in the district budget reports, and you can go back years. You asked where that information could be found. There you go. Director Leon, you asked about how you could improve communication. Answer people's questions. Do your research. Care enough to look up the facts for yourself, like we do, and like we teach our students too. And the other two members aren't here tonight, but I'd like to suggest to Director Cobb, if she needs an alternate communication route, she could try a closed Facebook group, a Twitter feed, a text messaging app. These are all effective methods of intercommunication that have been used very successfully by my union and by a lot of other groups. And the last question was from Director Viall. Do we have enough water to last seventy-two hours in an earthquake? Not only do we not have enough water to last two hours or seventy-two hours in an earthquake, we don't have the space to store that much water. And at my school, Bryant, we have nothing resembling retrofitting for any seismic event of any size. We made it through 1965 because we haven't been upgraded since then, so I'm hoping for the best. We made it through 2001. The other thing I'd like to say is, this is a question I have for you, so I've listened carefully to your questions, and I provided what I think are pretty good answers. Would you come to work if you knew your paycheck was going to be five dollars and sixty cents for two weeks of work? A para in my building had her hours cut without her permission to halftime. She and her husband are on her insurance. That's the paycheck she got on the twentieth, five dollars and sixty cents. In November, when the prices go up for her health care, she will be paying Tacoma Public Schools for the privilege of working for you. That ought to be earth-shattering to you. I know it is to her.
Tamara followed by Janet Hubbard.[976.01][976.01]60.1
Maybe. Good afternoon, Board. I am a taxpaying citizen living in Tacoma School District. I also vote. I moved to this district seventeen years ago. I raised three beautiful children, all who are living in Tacoma, paying taxes. All of them are very successful. I owe that to their father and I. I also attribute it to the work of Fern Hill, Baker, and Mount Oklahoma. I am a paraeducator that works hard for the kids of Tacoma. My wages and the wages of my fellow union family are disgraceful. I am appalled at the recent strike and the union busting that this district did. I am a union family. Tacoma is a union town.
Janet Hubbard followed by Winay Wright.[1035.73][1035.73]60.2
Okay. I wrote up a letter kind of detailing what I do during the day. I'm an upper elementary paraeducator at Bryant Montessori. I work with five different classes of fourth and fifth graders. My days vary because I'm in a different classroom every day. My day begins at nine-thirty, although I would love for it to start earlier so that I could speak to my teachers and greet the students. My job description can be anywhere from laminating and copying to working with writing, math, and reading skills with students. Sometimes I am working with fifth graders on exponents. Sometimes I'm working with fourth graders on their multiplication facts. It changes from day to day. Okay, I better hurry up anyway. I have, with three other staff, I'm out on the playground with a hundred upper elementary and middle school students. Then we go into the combination gym, auditorium, and lunchroom, where we attempt to have a peaceful, well-mannered lunch in a room with bad acoustics. Every day is a different, I'm with a different class in library where I check out books and shelf them. I also, I don't get my lunch till maybe one-thirty, and sometimes when I leave the classroom, I'm captured by a student from another room whose teacher needs a break. School ends at three-forty, but I'm still there doing bussing. Anyway, I love my job, but I want my MacLeary money because I'm worth it.
Winay Wright followed by Ezra Braster, I believe.[1183.13][1183.13]60.3
Hello, my name is Winay Wright. I am a parent in the Tacoma Public School District. I have a kid in fifth and sixth grades. I am here to talk about asking you to reconsider the calendar. Breaks are very important to kids. They need those brain breaks, especially spring break really stood out to me. There's a huge time period there with no breaks, and cutting the spring break will really affect my students who are in AP classes. Giving the okay to miss days, the intruency will not be enforced, it's not the point. If they have homework to take with them on spring break, they essentially are getting no break, and it will put them behind. It makes me question whether I can send them on their annual trip to visit their grandparents and great-grandparents, because as AP students, they may fall behind and not be able to make it back from that and the stress that they'll be under for it. Another thing I wanted to say is in response to the superintendent's comment about graduation and needing to graduate at a certain time. I graduated in 1991 from the Sumner School District, and school was on strike that year. We graduated, we walked, and then we came back to school and put in another week or two, I can't remember what the days were. So it is possible to go ahead and walk, and I still have my little fake diploma I got, and they mailed me my diploma a few weeks later. So that is an option. Please don't dismiss that. And then I think adding days to the end of the school year is the least disruptive. When you're willing to allow students to miss the days throughout the learning year, it's better to add that to the end when tests are done, you're just wrapping things up. The middle of the year is the time the kids need to be there. Thank you. Since I have eighteen seconds, I want to say one more thing. My mother used to drive for Tacoma Public Schools, and to reiterate what someone else said, she got paychecks for zero dollars because of the insurance, and she only took the job because of insurance. But getting paychecks for zero dollars, she only lasted two years driving bus because of that. Thank you.
Ezra followed by Penny Kramer.[1326.51][1326.51]61.4
Hello, Board. My name is Ezra Brewster, and I'm a student at Foss High School. I would like to talk today about the arts and education and the crossroads that has been created within Tacoma Public Schools. This crossroads is that of the arts and advanced courses. While many schools here within the Tacoma School District have many higher-level courses available, there's an apparent disconnect when one attempts to coordinate taking these courses while also pursuing the arts. As a musician myself, and simultaneously a student who wishes to graduate with the IB diploma through Foss High School, this is a very personal dilemma. The arts are vital to the education of our students. I say this speaking as someone who plans to major in sciences, but I ask, what would Newton have done when that apple, myth or not, fell upon his head had he not valued his own creativity and preserved it? Most likely, he would have done nothing but get up and sit somewhere else. But instead, what did he do? With his creativity, which is enforced through the arts, and this new understanding of gravity, he created an entire new field of math. This creativity is held aloft through the arts. Music in particular has profound and beneficial effects on the mind. Not only can it relax and help to de-stress the mind, many forms of music have been shown to aid in learning and memory. The arts cannot be cut short in exchange for higher academics. Arts must be considered equal to other aspects of our education.
Penny Kramer followed by Shirley Robinson.[1437.83][1437.83]62.5
Hi, I'm Penny Kramer, a parent, an employee, and a voter, and I am angry. TPS priorities are safety, early childhood, academic excellence, and community partnerships, and I'm wondering how the decisions being made are supporting these goals. Last week, several people spoke on the Board of reconciliation, but then this new calendar came out. Nobody asked the parents. A survey in 2017 doesn't count as asking the parents. TEA was completely ignored. That does not count as input. Parents, I know as a parent that my kids need a week off in April. As a teacher, I know that I cannot do that unless I ask, can I please take a day off? I will have to beg to be able to get my children what they need. Then, as a teacher, this feels very punitive. Every single break is affected, every single one, and telling parents to just miss those days means that you are not valuing the education that we provide, which is our first priority. Also, I asked the school board, who is both my boss and my voice to the people who work at CAB, to do what you're supposed to. You're supposed to tell the people at CAB what we, the community, the parents, the teachers, the children, need, not the other way around. You need to listen to the community, email, return phone calls, Facebook group, a community forum, perhaps show up at schools. Thank you, Debbie, who came and spent a very lovely day with us at Bryant. You need to set the budget priorities. As a teacher, I don't need my time. I don't need my home address given to ASCD. I do not need CAB administrators to be traveling in the U.S. and abroad. I do not need testing and testing and testing and more testing. I need paper clips. I need copy paper. I need manipulatives. I need smaller class sizes. I need to be treated with respect, and I need the paras who do so much to be paid a
Shirley Robinson.[1576.13][1576.13]63.6
I am Shirley Robinson, a first-grade teacher at Skyline Elementary. I have been privileged to work with paraeducators for almost thirty years in regular and special education. I am honored to speak on behalf of these very dedicated professionals that positively change the lives of children every day. Many of our paraeducators work with wheelchair tube-fed, fragile children, and vision impaired. Daily, they literally help keep these children alive and healthy through feeding tubes, diaper changes, and these are not toddlers or babies. Lifting students in and out of wheelchairs, teaching small groups, one-on-one instruction, working with autistic children, and this population is growing. Creating entire resource libraries for teachers to help them improve instruction, creating and running a garden club for elementary students, guiding our blind children through the hallways, helping some struggling students to achieve success, making the school environment a safer and happier place so all students can feel proud to be part of the school community. This list is too short to begin to tell their daily stories of their many contributions to our country's most precious resource, our children. We all have someone or someones in our lives that made a difference in contributing to who we are today. It may be a parent, grandparent, aunt, uncle, coach, pastor, or friend. Paraeducators do this for children every day in the school community. You probably could not put a price on what these relatives or friends did for you because they are priceless, but if you could, it would not be a small amount. Keep these beautiful, dedicated, loving people in our schools by giving them a salary that allows them to support themselves in their basic needs. If our nonverbal, as well as verbal, children were here, they would tell you that these paraeducators are their moms and dads away from home that love them and protect them. When the parents leave them at school for the day, they know their child will be in good hands. Please show you value these dedicated professionals by increasing their salary. Many have been through extensive training classes in colleges. Thank you for listening. Please don't let these important individuals be forgotten. When you do, you forget our most vulnerable population, our children. They are depending on you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. I want to say I appreciate everyone coming out, and this is important to be able to dialogue. We need to be in conversation with one another, and I want you to understand, from the board's perspective, I think we're at unprecedented times in terms of board members' connections to schools. So President Cobb, Director Leon, and I have children currently in Tacoma Public Schools, and Director Wenskill and Vice President Viall have grandchildren in Tacoma Public Schools. So we're sitting up here because we want to make a difference, and we want to represent ideas that you bring to us, and so I hope that when I look out and see a full audience, I greatly appreciate it. Typically, there's Sally and maybe three other people in the audience, so please continue to show up and engage and model what civil discourse looks like to our kids and how we challenge ideas but not individuals, and how we come up with solutions. So I appreciate the messages I get from people telling me, I don't like what you're doing. I've heard that. Propose a solution. I want to hear solutions. We want to hear solutions. We are looking for information driven from... are looking for information driven from the community to help us ultimately have to make decisions. We have one employee that we're responsible for and it's the superintendent. So each of us has one-fifth into the superintendent. The superintendent is the CEO of Tacoma Public Schools. We give policy, we set expectation, we hold the district accountable to the goals that we've identified in the strategic plan and the benchmarks. We are on the same side in this issue. We have different roles and responsibilities. So I encourage you to continue to show up and speak up. We want to hear you. We appreciate your perspective. Let's identify problems and solve them together. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to add?
We have a time later for general comments.
Sure. Yeah, we'll have Board comments.
Yeah, okay. I'll wait.
All right. And I hope that you all stay. I understand that it's late and if you'd like a couple of minutes to leave, we would be happy to grant you that opportunity. We would encourage you to stay if you'd like to stay and be witness to the rest. Yes, it's... All right, we will move on to item...
[laughing]
We will move on to item number eight, the consent agenda.
I move approval.
So I have questions about the consent agenda.
Okay, and let's pause it 30 seconds so that we'll let people leave. And then I'll ask for questions or comments.
Got it. Thanks.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any questions or comments, Director Leone?
So question about number 8.4D. There's been some... So that is a... Should I wait a little longer or just continue?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please make your way outside, we are still conducting our business meeting.
So bringing that up as one of the trips to Arizona for five school board, or not school board, from five administrators and teachers is what is described here. I'm sure there's been some good discussion about the importance of the trips and I'd like to hear more about this one specifically for the Wallace Grant training. And it's something that's already been instituted and happening in our schools and the payment of this trip comes from the grant apparently. So my concern with any longer trips with large amounts of people being gone is the time away from Tacoma Public Schools and the potential loss of productivity here and the loss of leadership. So I wonder if it's necessary to send five members to this one or could less go? And then in that vein, I know we've talked before, I've heard from several of my constituents and we heard a comment today about international trips. And I had a conversation with Superintendent Santorno about the possibility of international trips happening possibly in the summertime. So this hasn't been admitted as a decision yet, but when school is not in session, so it does not affect loss of productivity when students are in session. So if there are other follow-ups or any more information on that, I'd love to hear it.
Well, Director Leone, let me ask you a clarifying question. Are you aware of the Wallace Grant and the process we went through to receive it and what it's intended to do?
So I'm not aware of the whole grant and the process you went through. So I know it's, I realize it's important for our students, but I'd like just some more clarification on, is this a continuing process? Is it, how often do people go? Glad to have information. Sure.
So the Wallace Grant is, there's requirements to participate. We were one of six cities that was selected across the nation from over 100 cities that were invited to participate. And it was an 18-month process to identify what cities would participate. So this is a cross-city effort. And we have convenings that we are required to attend. They call them learning sessions where like groups are invited to participate. And in this election, we were actually asked to bring a lot more participants and we made the decision earlier to not do that. So roles are required to attend. CEOs, senior-level leadership at the administrative level, building principal or designee, classroom teacher, ELO coordinators. And so there will be community members as well as staff that are required to attend. There is fluidity in the grant. They require us to attend. They have indicated that there may be two meetings a year or maybe one meeting. Or there may be another group for a meeting that evolves because it's a learning organization and they're doing research where they may come out and say, we need your principals to require. They fully fund the travel. It is at no cost to the district. As well as, part of their requirements is they have invested in staff. And so they pay for staff. They pay for professional development time. They pay for research. And so there are many benefits that come. And then the productivity is about learning as well as redefining the action plans as part of the grant data analysis. And so folks are actually working while they're there as well.
That's very helpful. It sounds like you've evaluated and like you said, originally there were lots more people that were supposed to go, but the number's been brought down to what you think is appropriate. So I think that as long as there's stringent oversight of how many people go on not just this conference for this grant, which sounds like it's benefiting our students a lot, but all of them, I think that the public would appreciate that that that's being done. And it sounds like it is. So thanks.
And there's other trainings that we will see. You'll see folks that are coming for IB trainings that are required. And there's only certain times where those happen. They're not all outside of school. And so we'll bring those and we will do our fiduciary responsibility to try to develop a rotation schedule to make sure that we're not just training one group of folks. We're building capacity across the organization, classroom teachers, a variety of others. But it is likely that we will be bringing you other trips in the future in order to implement the programs that are a part of our district.
Good. Thank you. Sounds good.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three-zero. Item number nine, policy matters. There are no policy matters under consideration this evening. Item number 10, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org. About finance, we had a briefing at the last board meeting. Item number 11, curriculum instruction. There is none under consideration this evening. Item number 12, business matters, 12.1, approval of bus maintenance services.
I speak on behalf of the Chief Financial Officer. The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors award the bus maintenance services contract to First Student Inc. for the period of October 1st, 2018 through October 31st, 2023.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries three-zero. Item number 13, other business? No other business this evening. Item number 14, report to the Board. 14.1, strategic benchmark report, annual early learning.
Ms. Pace, Ms. Ferguson, and myself will be doing the early learning report. Unfortunately, Ms. Verhart had a family emergency and will not be able to be with us. And so we'll turn it over to Ms. Pace and Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you. Am I on? I'm on. Okay. Doesn't sound up for my sound. Okay, this is our annual report for early learning and I'm very excited to be here with Ms. Ferguson, who's the Director of Early Learning, taking Marie Verharr's place. So just a reminder of our goal three, early learning, is that we are focusing on early assessment and intervention at the pre-K through third-grade levels to ensure early academic success.
And looking at the mission of our early learning department is in direct alignment with our strategic plan goals. We strive to support our youngest learners in reaching their highest developmental, social, and academic potential to enhance their success in kindergarten and beyond. So looking at our priority benchmark around preschool enrollment, as of June 2018, we had a total of 72 classrooms across 33 elementary locations. Our district serves students in six preschool programs.
Enrollment has increased from 620 to 703 from last year due to programs growing towards capacity and also opened a new extended-day program at Reed Elementary and a peer model classroom at Fern Elementary. We also increased the number of full-day preschool programs to nine total in the year 2017.
So just as we're looking at the enrollment increases, there's a correlation that all of our preschools are not categorically funded. So there is local levy dollars that the Board has decided in years past to support the early learning mission. And so you'll see those increases over the years because that was a strategic plan benchmark, that was a focus, and even including the options from half-day to full-day. Not all of our programs are. And when you see peer inclusion, that's an integrated approach. So as we move forward towards the future, we'll have to relook at all of these programs in the sense of how do we sustain these valuable efforts and at the same time, address where we are.
And while we're on the topic, I know Tacoma was the first district to offer free kindergarten and then we became the first district in the state to offer free preschool. How many other school districts of the 295 in the district offer free preschool citywide?
Do you have an idea about that?
I don't know exactly how many. I know a lot of districts offer the ECAP and Head Start programs which are free, but their peer model programs still charge a tuition. It's tuition-based.
So the programs that receive federal subsidy are free?
Free.
But anything else is a tuition-based in most districts in the state?
And state subsidized programs as well are free.
For ECAP. All right. Thank you. Please.
So the next slide breaks down our preschool enrollment count by subgroup. And you can see the percentages there. Wanted to point out that the multi-subgroup represent a larger percentage of enrollment than the overall district enrollment.
So those at home, what you'll see on the right-hand side is the latest OSPI demographic data. And the Board has asked us to present that in the past to give a understanding of where are we in comparison to our overall population. And so you'll see the totals on the right side and then the totals, which is the 2018 percentage of the preschool enrollment to help us identify, are we serving our community?
So I think I've covered most of the key findings that are listed on this slide. We'll go into next steps.
Yes. Looking forward to our next steps. We're continuing our effort around streamlining our enrollment system. So we created an electronic centralized system for parents to be able to apply online. We also provide hard copy applications for parents that might not have access to computers at home or not available to go to the schools to apply as well. We are also working with the DART team to continue, to expand the capabilities of our data dashboard to analyze kindergarten performance and comparing it with our TPS preschool students. We're working on gaining administrative access to the TS School portal because sometimes those contracts are made through federal and state agencies for our DART team to be able to access that information. We continue to work with community partners and share our early learning hubs and we will continue to seek proposals for both Willard and Madison this year. Finally, this year, we must reapply for our Head Start Recompetition Grant. Our grant has expired. It ended its five-year cycle. So we must reapply as a district due to some deficiencies in 2015. So the magnitude of that reapplication will be significant and competing with other agencies for our Head Start slots. But we're geared up and ready to do the work. For your reference in the appendix, we have included the last annual report on preschool enrollment for comparison.
So what's important to note in that, the subtlety there is we have to compete for funding in order to offer these programs. So not only, there are some programmings where it's truly flow-through. And then there is this notion that we have to prepare and compete in order to offer these services to our community. So none of that is guaranteed. That is our monitoring report and a quick Board update. We'll be back in the spring with a full update. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
You mentioned...
Director Leone.
Yes. Competition? What does that competition look like and how at risk are we or other districts to not be chosen?
So the grant just released on September 20th, the ability to apply for the funding, and it closes November 19th. There could be up to two agencies applying for Tacoma Head Start slots, which is 563 slots. So we're not sure who we'll be competing against quite yet. But other agencies can put in an application to receive the grant for the 563 slots, Head Start slots.
In addition to that, as federal regulations and priorities change, those slots vary from year to year. So it's not a consistency that we can plan for on a yearly basis.
Generally Tacoma Schools gets those slots. In the past, that has happened, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And so have you heard any words?
I'm sorry, Director Wenskill. Director Leone had the floor. Are you finished with the question?
I'm done. Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Director Wenskill.
No, I just wondered if you have heard of any other agency trying to get those funds?
I have not.
A question on the ELL. Can you give us a little more description? Is it, are there multiple languages in the ELL? How is that situated? What is the purpose? What are the outcomes we expect to achieve?
So we have one ELL class at Sheridan and it's multiple language as well as peers that speak English only. So the outcome is that we hope that we are being able to address any type of cognitive numeracy, any type of gaps in the six developmental areas that students may have or barriers that they may face because English is not their first language. So we have a variety of languages, but the one at Sheridan, it's mostly Spanish-speaking students.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you, both.
Item number 15, Board comments and reports. I'm going to start with our student representatives.
I have two comments. So first of all, I really appreciate all the feedback from the community because not only my school, I care about my staff at my school and the environment is there. I also care about my parents because they both work in the school district and it's nice to know what people are experiencing in the school district. And so we can make a plan to make it even better than it already is. And then also, two students from my school that I know came because they're in IB program and they also like to be in music programs. And I had that problem as well because I was in choir and I'm currently a full IB student. I mentioned that probably. And I think that if there is a way that we can do both simultaneously, I know the schedule is very packed and it's really hard and there's staffing issues, but I think that it'd be really important and valuable for the kids for balance and because a lot of the students at Foss and probably at other schools too just really love rigorous classes and music or other forms of art like drama or visual arts. And it's really hard when you have to choose or when you have to sacrifice something you want to go into a career for versus something that will help you get into college. And so yeah, again, I think we should really see if there's creative ways we can make that happen or ways we can work around things. Because also if a student isn't currently in a choir or orchestra class, they cannot participate in the all-state programs because it's not for credit, even if there's like an after-school program, which is really unfortunate. And a lot of me and my friends are upset about that and we're trying to make some ways around that. And I think that the Board could look for ways to do that.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to just make a comment of what I heard from the community about the parent educator who got her hours cut in half and received a paid the para educator who got her hours cut in half and received a paycheck of $5.60, which I don't know, that kind of stood out to me just because I know that I work and I know it's not the same thing. But when I like get my hours cut and they just don't let me know. And so they're just like, oh, you're only working these hours. I know that does suck because sometimes even though I do have my parents' support, if I didn't, I know that there is a lot of things that you have to pay for, like I pay my own phone bill and stuff like that. So I know that I just pay like just my phone bill and my insurance, but they have to pay like rent and like if they have children, they have to pay for their stuff as well. So I think that, I know that Lisa Nolan said that she checked from the other person who got their hours cut. So I think it'd be nice if they looked into that as well.
Thank you. I know that they're on that. When we hear those concerns expressed, that the team follows up on it. And I will anticipate the next time that we meet publicly, we'll have a, some context around that issue. Thank you for raising it.
Director Leon.
Thanks. So it sounds like there were a lot of concerns about the school calendar still. And there are master schedules at each school that are obviously pretty important to be followed also. This idea of coming back after graduation to finish school seemed interesting. I don't know if that's something that's be considered, but I'll, I'll leave that to, hopefully there's more discussion that will happen around this, this school calendar schedule. I do agree that the arts are very important for education for all the reasons that our speakers and you have mentioned. So I also know that the IB diploma has rigorous requirements that are hard to work around sometimes. And that's not within our control. Whether or not someone decides to take one less AP class is within their control. But I'd like to hear from our administration or the schools themselves, what they can do to maybe make the scheduling easier to be able to take an arts, not just music, any arts class along with the rigorous non-art schedule. I'll be visiting, so this Monday, I'm going to be visiting some, some schools, Mount Oklahoma, Gray, and Manitow. And thanks for those principals letting me come and visit those schools. And I intentionally am going to be going to some of the special ed classrooms also. So I look forward to meeting some of the para educators there and as the teachers too, of course. And the last thing I'll mention is that the Latino Expo is happening at the Star Center this Sunday from four to seven with some community partners. And I'll be meeting with, you don't have to be Latino to go, obviously. There's food and other cultural activities there. But I'll be looking for any Latino parents and students that have concerns. I'll be listening to their concerns there or any parents that want to reach out to me there.
Director Wensko.
So I have, first of all, an article for everybody. It has to do with late, early starts for students and how it has been, it's detrimental to their health. And this actually is from the New York Times. So I'm going to pass these out. I have five copies. So it was in this Sunday's New York Times. So we have talked about later starts for high school. And I want to make sure our high school students get one too and can weigh in on this maybe at a later time. I went to the Legislative Assembly in Spokane last week. That's why I wasn't at the meeting. And they had a panel of students talking about school safety. And what came through with all of these students, and they had been from schools where there had been shootings, that what they felt was, what was needed was relationships with the staff. And that was, came out loud and clear, more than having like a single entrance or metal detectors or anything like that. They said, we don't want to be a fortress. We just want to have relationships with people. So it was quite a good panel. And we heard from the finance director of Seattle Schools and the budget officer, the governor maybe, which were also very, a good presentation, just about sort of the hopelessness of the budget, state budget coming up next year. It was not a pleasant presentation. And it seems, it sounds like many, many districts are having the same issues that we're having. So, and there was a lot of votes on, there were 150 propositions put forward and voting on the top ones. And we will not know for about another month which, the top 15 that rose to the top. But people were talking about salary schedule for the state and a lot of, a variety of issues, special ed funding, things like that. So I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I have a question, I think, and it would be appropriate when we have the full board here. But if there were votes taken, did you offer a position on behalf of Tacoma on those votes?
I did not.
Okay. So you abstained from voting on any of the issues?
No, I voted on issues, but I did not prioritize.
So I would be, my recollection is Director Viall is the current legislative representative. So how we select who's going to represent the votes. I know that I didn't get to see any of those issues prior to the vote being taken. And I think it's important for us to have public debate about the issues. We may designate a single person, a single voice to go and represent the district. But as we're thinking about getting into this new academic year, as those legislative issues come forward and carving out space on the agenda to have the conversation so that we can reach consensus publicly, and then have the person who is identified as representative deliver the collective perspective of the board would be a very transparent way to handle that process.
That's right. I agree.
I will also echo the support of the arts. And I think unfortunately, you have a nice problem, right? You find yourself in a high school that offers an AB program and you have an interest in choir. My wife, who's a former high school English teacher, is a classically trained cellist. Our 15-year-old is following in her footsteps. And my 12-year-old's an aspiring trumpeter. And I will tell you, I much more enjoy listening to my 15-year-old play his cello than I do my 12-year-old play his trumpet. And my 10-year-old is very excited because she's going to get to see, I think later, maybe tomorrow or early next week at the elementary school, they're going to bring the instruments by. So for us in this district where the board a few years ago created a policy that was intended to provide a more flexible way for credit attainment, I would be interested to see, and certainly if you have ideas, ways that we might be able to provide credit when you're engaged in those sorts of cultural arts activities. Because it is, I think that there's an incredible opportunity. My bias, and my wife gives me a bad time, I was kicked out of the sixth grade choir because I couldn't carry a tune. But I think that there's so many learnings and we heard from the student talking about not just to sing or to play a musical instrument to express yourself. I think there's value in that. And I think particularly for adolescents that may not be able to verbalize, but they express emotions through their art, through their music. I think it's a valuable opportunity for them to, to get out what may be bubbling up inside and to share something that brings them joy with the rest of the world. I also think it's linked to brain development, that there's quite a few studies on the cognitive skills that come with people that are exposed to the arts. And in the spirit of partnership, and I raised this issue a couple of months ago, but the power that we have in this community to express an idea and then to make it happen. And this is one where I think if we get creative with partners in the public sector and the private sector, because dollars are tight. And if we can find private sector partners that understand the value, and if we can create a forum in which to provide kids with multiple opportunities to be exposed to the arts, I think that would be beneficial. Dr. Garcia?
Just a couple of quick notes that maybe you can share with your classmates. And then we, Ms. Pace and I will make sure the school administration knows. The board of directors, three, four years ago, passed a policy based on a unique state law that says, any child that sits for the IB testing requirements for the diploma, now the key there is sits for the testing requirements, not necessarily passes all the tests, but sits, by law has the flexibility to waive other graduation requirements. So I'm familiar of two school districts in the state that have that policy that allow that flexibility. Now, the tension is, you and your classmates are very driven. And you still may not be able to fit everything into that two, 7:00 AM to 2:30 chunk of time when you put all the IB diploma requirements or testing requirements in there. So the school, FOS in this situation, is looking at different options. But it will have to be a collaboration to think of potentially shifting teaching assignment schedules. But that's not something that we would do in isolation. And so looking at potential where some schools may have a zero hour because the starting before and after. And then there is the tension of every child, every day. But we still have that, that, as we have the tension where certain classes are really large. When classes are very small, we may not be able to offer that to that same level. So between the combination of the policy 2000, which is the credit attainment that allows kids to earn credits, which may be the flexibility, if I'm in the Tacoma Symphony, to do that and still participate in state competition, because that could be a class, the flexibility of maybe I don't need and want to take a different class during my day, I may be able to fit music in, and the flexibility of potentially looking at unique ways to potentially work at changing class schedules. We're, just talked with the school again today, looking at all those options. So if you could help spread the word, it will really probably be a case-by-case situation for each student. But that's the way we should, you know, look at it that way. And then Assistant Superintendent Pace and I will make sure that the school staff and counseling has that access to that policy so that they can reinforce that.
Alright, thank you. And lastly, as we start to look at budgets and potential cuts and determine, you know, I appreciate a last board meeting, Director Wensko asked for a year-long study. And I, I think we need to do a deep dive. I would argue, I'd like to see us be even more aggressive than a year-long. I'd like to see us get really into the data. And, and the interesting thing, so my former high school English teacher wife is now a compensation consultant. So we have fascinating conversations around compensation and how you compare apples to apples. And so I would be very interested to see how our superintendents pay compares to other superintendents of like-sized districts in the state and across the country. So we can determine, are we, where are we in the market? Are we at the 95th percentile paying the absolute most? Are we at the bottom? Because I have heard from the community that you need to pay competitive wages to attract and retain the best talent. And in my mind, that's throughout the district. And it starts with our leadership. It's our teachers in the classroom. It's our bus drivers. It's paras. We need to make certain that we're making investments in our people. And we're a data-driven organization. So speaking individually, it would be helpful for me. We've got some really difficult decisions ahead of us. I am optimistic. Well, let me say, I'm hopeful. I don't know if I'm quite optimistic about the legislature's not very good at solving problems. They seem to create more than they solve. But I hope that the community is going to take the same spirit that was displayed during the strike to Olympia. And the time to do that is now. And we need to be contingency planning. And so to the extent that we can start, as Director Wensko said, to really get going on a study, I would really appreciate, I think that needs to become the top priority as we look at study sessions and upcoming meetings, that the focus needs to be on preservation of existing programs and services in the district. So we can have ample time to engage the community if we find ourselves in a position of having to make cuts, to get their input on if we can't do everything, what are their priorities? And the sooner we can better understand things like salary structures and how it relates to other districts and the ratio of administrators, para salaries, all of it to me is integral to what we're going to have to accomplish in the next few months. Any other questions or comments? Thank you to those, gold star for those that hung in for the entire meeting. We'll move on to item number 16, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, October 11th, we will be here for a regular business meeting at 6:00 PM. And then on Thursday, October 18th, we'll be back for a study session at 6:00 PM. And then on Thursday, October 25th, we'll be back for a 6:00 PM regular business meeting. Item 17, executive session. I believe there is none this evening. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.